Okay, we'll get started. This is a council committee of the whole meeting of October 30th, 2024. And it's called to order at 3:45. We only have one budget item, and that is with respect to energy production budget. And so I will turn it over to City Manager Mitchell for an introduction.
Thank you through the chair. We're here to talk about energy production. And Rochelle and her team will go over the budget deliberations for '25 and '26. But first, Managing Director Egert would have some introductory comments. Go ahead, Dennis.
And Managing Director Egert, please also, if you would like to introduce the people who are here with you to... Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, council. I will save the introductions to later and also allow Managing Director Pankos to make some specific introductions. As an introduction for this afternoon, the development of the city budget again consists of four council committee of the whole meetings that we've planned for October and November. We had one last week related to rate-based utilities. This afternoon, we're going to be talking about energy production. Next week, we're going to focus on the municipal part of the budget. And then the following week will be land development and real estate. So these meetings allow council to explore the details of certain topics and ask questions of staff to gain a full understanding before the item is formally presented and deliberated at a regular council meeting in December. These reports that we, that you have, have been provided for informational purposes only. So as you know, as part of a council committee of the whole, no decisions will be made at the meeting tonight. The energy production budget deliberation again is the second of these four deliberation sessions. At this point, departments have completed base operating budgets, identified operating cost pressures, identified operational initiatives, sustaining and growth capital opportunities. I do want to acknowledge the strategic and thoughtful work done by so many of my colleagues, especially this afternoon in preparing the budget and the related materials. They are the subject matter experts, and I'm glad that they're here, and they'll be available for presentation and discussion of this presentation. The purpose of this afternoon is to seek alignment with council on the energy production business unit. Council also has the opportunity to ensure that this budget plan aligns with their strategic priorities. Business models were reviewed and updated to reflect the most recent commodity price forecasts, emission compliance requirements, sustainability or sustaining capital requirements. Changes in market commodity prices do impact a broad category of revenue and expense items, and carefully outlining these implications to city council this afternoon and the entire community is an important step towards a sound budget decision. Budgets are one of the most important tasks for both city council and administration. This process is lengthy, occurring over the course of several months, with a multitude of inputs, considerations, including ensuring that the energy production business is sustainable and driving value for the community. Again, to balance the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. Through this process, we are committed to aligning with council's strategic priorities, addressing corporate needs, balancing affordability with the need to prudently invest in our infrastructure and assets and ensure reliability and safety. So with that, I will now turn it over to my colleague, Managing Director Pankos, and she'll be making some introductions.
Thank you very much, Managing Director, and welcome, Managing Director Pankos. I understand that there are two counselors online with the presentation up. I'm not sure if it's possible for us to get them to just show their faces. Counselor Van Dyke, welcome, and Counselor Sharps. Thank you. Yeah, and now that we've confirmed who you are, you do not need to have your video on. Go ahead, City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you through the chair. I just wanted to point out that on November 13th, it will be land, and it will also be economic development, too. So we want to make sure that was added. Go ahead, Rochelle.
Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon, everybody. And I'll take a moment to introduce my colleagues. We have a couple online. We have Director Mostaway representing our electric generation business. We also have Director Tucher representing our energy marketing and business analytics, which supports the commodity side of the business. We also have my colleagues who will be joining me in presenting today, both Josh Barclay and Joel Higgins from our energy marketing and business analytics team. And we also have Tori Coombs representing lead on the natural gas production side of our business. So certainly a complex area and a wonderful team that supports all of this. And back to the presentation if we can. So as Managing Director Egert shared, this is one part of the budget series. And today, obviously, is the energy production side. And within energy production, we really are talking about the gas, natural gas production, and the electric generation side. And to distinguish from what we covered last time, which was rates, the rates and was really focused on the energy side with respect to distribution, so the poles and wires and pipelines. Whereas on the gas production and electric generation, it is really about how to produce the commodity itself in terms of natural gas and electricity. But before we jump into the overall budget specifics that my colleagues will be sharing...
I apologize. Just to clarify, those pie pieces were not to scale...
They're not representative of appropriate size. They're just one piece of the pie.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we jump into the budget specifics that will be covered by my colleagues, we really just wanted to remind council of the strategic frame for how we are approaching the energy business and what that means in terms of how we're approaching the overall budget. A lot of this will be repeat for those of you who were able to join us last time, but we felt it was important to echo that for the general public and also to remind you how we are thinking about the budget itself. So the energy business certainly is a, and in this case, the energy production side of the energy business certainly is the highest risk area of our business units. That is reflective of the reality that these are the commodity sides of our business. This reflects both the input cost for electric generation, the output in terms of market prices when we do export for electricity, as well as the output with respect to natural gas production. Those, all we refer to as commodities and are reflective of how we engage in the broader provincial market and regional market on those prices. So as this town knows, and most oil and gas towns know, commodity cycles typically follow a boom and bust cycle. And that is really because as prices go up, supply responds, demand responds, prices come down, and then again, supply and demand respond. So it's often an overshoot of a supply and demand response causing high periods of prices followed by low periods of prices. That level of volatility is a level of risk and uncertainty that you don't typically see as part of a municipality. But we have built our energy business as we built our city, and we have been familiar with it through time. So not necessarily new for our city, but we do want to highlight that it is the higher risk area of our cash flows. In addition to that, I wanted to flag that on the natural gas production side, I think there still is this myth or misnomer that we are self-supplying our needs based on our local gas production. That hasn't been the case for years. We actually supply less than 10% of our peak needs. We are able to support upwards of 10,000 MMBTUs for our local gas heating needs on the distribution side. All of our electric generation heating needs are from the broader market, from the high-pressure system, as are the larger customers that we have in this area, the larger industrial customers. They also secure their gas from a third-party market, high-pressure system. In addition, because our gas volumes have been declining through time, we're also in that space where our revenues related to gas supply has been decreasing. And we are also facing higher abandonment and reclamation costs at a point where those revenues are down. So it is, on the gas side, it is often a cash draw from, in order to support the abandonment requirements of that side of the business. And even on the electric generation side, because of the boom-bust cycle of commodity pricing, it is possible that there are times where we may need to draw from our reserves when we're in a low-price period, and we are looking to capture the benefits of the high prices so that we can contribute to the reserves in those periods. I also wanted to highlight, though, that any given single year isn't necessarily a measure of success or not in a commodity business because it may be a high year, or it may be a low year, and you need to look at their ability to be reliable and sustainable through time, withstanding those prices, pricing highs and lows. So how have we approached energy production so far? And this has been a discussion over the last year in particular regarding our energy philosophy. And historically, through policy, through practices, through reinforcing how we're making our decisions, we have been behaving as if we are a business in the broader market. And when I say that, I'm really meaning that we are responsive to commodity price signals on the input and the output side. And we do that because when we are exporting, we receive a price. We look to price similarly internally when that occurs. And ultimately, the proceeds from those earnings on the energy businesses come back to the city in the form of an internal dividend. However, it has been the case where that philosophy of behaving like a business within a city has been questioned. So I will speak to it a little bit further along, but we are in the midst of our energy business review, being conducted by independent party KPMG, and we do expect that to come forward shortly. So because that work is not yet complete, we are assuming that the current philosophy holds, and the current approach to retail energy pricing locally also holds in terms of assuming that the interim wholesale best-of-market rate holds within the energy market pricing. So how have we done with respect to the behave as a business and be able to deliver the related returns back to the city? These are just two smaller examples. We had many more examples back when we provided the energy strategy in September. On the left, through the yellow and the gray, is how we've been contributing in the last decade around energy dividends. Prior to that point, natural gas really was a very strong contributor to our dividends. And now that we're on the tail end of that business, electric generation has picked that up. You will see the backend, though, that's reflective of the commodity volatility and higher prices that we saw in that period. That, of course, was a challenge for our consumers, but ended up being a strong benefit on the energy production and business side of things. However, now we are on that down cycle. We are now seeing very low prices and needing to survive through that low pricing period. Of those dollars that were contributed even just since 2017, you can see the growth of our Mass and Hat Endowment Fund over that period. So of the dividends contributed, some of those dividends went into that endowment fund, and it's now roughly close to 200 million, which was the original target we were shooting for. However, with success from the past doesn't necessarily mean we're guaranteed success going forward. Really, in the past, it was supply-demand responding to market. We were able to capitalize on the energy resources that we had locally. Of course, those resources, particularly on the natural gas side, have been drying up for years as the reservoirs become depleted through production. But the frame of how we're able to work and move forward in energy is also shifting, and it's largely driven by changes to the rules themselves. Government policy is changing how suppliers and consumers participate, and that is no so truer than in electricity. So you've seen many of these elements before, but energy transition is certainly a change in the rules, the regulations, the policies of how we're able to move forward. That defines an impact to our cost, an impact to how competitive our assets can be in the broader market, and whether or not we actually see pending regulations come through later this year as originally planned with clean electricity regulation that would require electricity to get to net zero carbon by 2035, a very short timeframe. That remains to be seen, but regardless, there still is momentum on imposing a cost on carbon at the large final emitter level, regardless of what's happening at the consumer level. We do face increasing costs through time today on carbon, even without clean electricity regulations coming in proposing stricter requirements. So the question around energy transition is how accelerated new stringent requirements may be or not, and trying to navigate through that space with investment questions on our side. As well, market rules in the provincial level are changing. There is electricity market redesign in progress. That's actually why Director Tucher wasn't able to join us in person today. He has been participating in person in some of that discussion. And that is largely in response to changing supply mix at the provincial level with significant volumes of renewable energy coming into the province. That is changing how the grid itself is operating and what the product needs in that grid are. And the Alberta Electric System Operator is looking to respond and adjust appropriately. As well, with energy transition, it is promoting changes to electricity in terms of technology. We anticipate at a later stage that will be true at other forms of energy as well. And the challenge for all of us as consumers, but particularly for the city of Mass and Hat as a producer, is that no one technology today can solve the affordable, clean, and reliable form of electricity that is becoming more and more prominent in the provincial and federal rules going forward. Certainly, renewables could solve the affordable and clean, but they are not a 24/7 opportunity of supply. And on the other hand, natural gas is a 24/7 opportunity of supply. They are not deemed to be clean based on carbon rules today, and they are expected to be penalized on an increasing basis going forward based on anticipated rules of the future. All of this, though, is also occurring while we are doing our energy business review, where there's a chance for a third party to revisit our overall philosophy and approach to how we behave as a business or not, and what that means in terms of rate design, in terms of relationship to earnings, dividends, et cetera. We do expect that the recommendation will come forward later in November, but we don't yet know where council will go with that recommendation, so there remains uncertainty there as well. And then finally, on the financial capacity side, there has been large pockets of misunderstanding in the community as well with respect to, we're flush with cash. We perhaps do have a bank account with cash in it. However, that, large portions of that cash are spoken for and equally offset by debt and liability obligations. And that's before we look to figure out how to manage our overall longer-term risk management considerations. Certainly, as we see volatility in commodity cycles, there is an expectation that on occasion that we will be drawing, both at the commodity business level, but certainly at the city as a whole, relying on those reserves, drawing them down through time, and our ability to manage those, through those commodity cycles, as well as the prospect of energy transition is weakened when we have fewer reserves going forward. So how do we proceed with all of that uncertainty? I'll remind you that there was a deeper dive into our energy strategy on September 16th. You can find that online. And as well, it was short of a roadmap because of all the moving pieces, but it was clear that action is still important and that regular revisits will need to occur as we receive new information about some of those uncertain areas. But I will share again what we shared that evening, that our strategic objective on the energy side is to drive value for our community. That's our first objective. And we suggest we do that by ensuring cost-competitive, reliable, and compliant energy. And when I say compliant energy, I'm referring to meeting the decarbonization requirements of the day and going forward because we need to protect our customers. We need to protect our customers in order to retain and attract potential customers for the benefit of our economy. Also suggest that we can drive value by providing sustainable profits from our energy business back to the city of Mass and Hat in the form of dividends. And if we aren't able to ever confidently sustain those profits through time, that we should start transitioning to third-party sources. For instance, relying more heavily on imports from the broader market rather than investing additional dollars into the business. And finally, recognizing that ultimately, through this transition, it's funding from the city that has invested in these assets. And if ever there is a shortfall, the only means that the city really has to recoup that funding is through taxpayers. So we need to be particularly mindful that ultimately, the risk of the business is borne by the taxpayers, and we need to make sure that we're managing our, any risk and buffering and making sure that any unintended liability is kept away from the taxpayers as appropriate. For strategic pillars, I want to emphasize, you've seen these before as well, but how you see them translated into the budget is reflected from this strategy, particularly on the existing electric generation side. We are assuming a sustaining capex, sustaining investment, ongoing expense approach to our natural gas assets on electric generation. We recognize that those are the workhorse of our electric supply and our electric business, both locally and for exports. And we need to make sure that we are maintaining those assets. It may be a low-price period today, but we do expect that could change in the future, commensurate with typical boom-bust cycles. And we need to be ready with assets that can deliver and achieve those earnings with the additional exports. In addition to making sure that we can satisfy our local needs, which is our first priority. As well, we are suggesting continued use of, sorry, of carbon offsets. That is a mechanism that we can comply with current carbon requirements today. And we are using offsets in order to make sure we continue to be compliant. The cost of that is increasing through time, so we are mindful of that. On the natural gas production side of things, we have been in wind down for some time through both sales and retirement of assets, and that process is continuing. We will continue to look for opportunities to improve that and optimize further. And then with respect to any new investment, which we don't have in this particular budget as of yet, we are continuing to assess opportunities to look at investments that will add diversification to our fleet when economically favorable in a way that we expect would add to our bottom line and add to our overall earnings in a way that is of a manageable size and scalable through time. There's other additional strategic pillars, and you'll see some of that through our presentation as well. So I'll perhaps save some time on that, since you've seen these before, and instead, actually just start diving directly into some of the key projects. On the well abandonment and reclamation slide, we have saved some of an update there for the true budget portion of the presentation that my colleagues will share. And then I'll quickly walk through where we're at with our energy business review with our carbon capture utilization and storage projects, Sama Solar, and more. On the energy business review, I think we have showed this slide numerous times. This is the sequencing that KPMG has been following from a broader project management perspective. They really highlighted their ability to understand our current state, worked through what are the various uncertainties that we are facing, and they certainly addressed similar ones that we have shared with you today. They have gone through a financial... They have gone through a financial analysis across a variety of scenarios based on the options that they were choosing to look at. And then finally, preparing a recommendation. And we are expecting the KPMG recommendation to come to open council at a special committee of council on November 25th. So we're looking forward to that date. And perhaps for the benefit of the community, we haven't been sharing details of what their recommendation will be simply because it is their independent work. But I will highlight that they were able to focus on any of a host of topics that we had highlighted. And they were charged with looking to find the best value for the community overall. And they have chosen to focus their options at the philosophical level regarding ownership, regarding governance and regarding financial structures. So on the 25th, I would expect to see their recommendation centered along that path. And I've lost the ability to change the slide. Oh, there we go. Thank you. On carbon capture, utilization and storage, or CCUS, we've had two projects underway. One is understanding what might be feasible in terms of adding to our existing gas-fired electric generation assets in order to mitigate carbon emissions. So we call that a preliminary engineering study on carbon capture. We have confirmed through that study that it is technically viable. However, we've also confirmed that at least at this point where we aren't required to mitigate down to net zero, that it is an expensive choice. So we are opting to push pause on proceeding with carbon capture on our existing assets until there are clear rules where a greater degree of carbon reduction would be required. And if that is the case, then we would compare this option against other options that we do have to confirm the most economic choices is made at that time. We do have a second one that's a much bigger project and we have been working on for quite some time. And that's our Clear Horizon Regional CCUS Hub Project. And we are targeting to do the first exploratory test wells, drilling of them later this winter. And of course, we previously came to council looking for approval of a related transaction or transactions. I committed to sharing an update with you once we are able to, and we're not quite there yet. So I hope to as soon as that is a possibility. With respect to Sama Solar, I actually have two slides on this one because there seem to be lots of questions about Sama Solar. We did announce our intent to become an owner. We still are not yet the owner of that project. But the intent to become the owner really is to gain the right to control the project before any build decision is made. It essentially creates an option for the city in order to move forward with solar by retaining rights to the existing permits and rights to the existing site. We do have an executed purchase and sale agreement in place, but conditions are pending. So it is not yet fully confirmed for close. We also have an application in with the Alberta Utilities Commission for transfer of ownership that has been submitted. That process is underway. And we have an application into the Alberta Utility Commission, Utilities Commission for what we call Section 95. And that has to do with the Electric Utilities Act and what we as a city are allowed to build or not. That has been submitted for their consideration as well. And we are in negotiation of finalizing the lease agreement should we be the become the owner for that site. I do want to clarify, though, that what we would become the owner of is what is currently permitted. But that is not at all our intent of how we would proceed. Our intent is that we would deepen due diligence before any decision to build. That our intent, as per our request into the AUC, is to start with something small, something up to 75 megawatts compared to the full permitted size of 325 megawatts. So no, we are not seeking to pursue the full 325 megawatts with any initial recommended build. And no, we are not looking to spend the estimated number that has been out in the public of $600 million for that 325 megawatt build. We are looking at deeper due diligence on a smaller size up to 75 megawatts. And that really is to ensure that it's a size that we can manage. I will highlight, though, that because it is currently permitted for 325 megawatts, we will have to do additional due diligence to amend the permit to the smaller size, which requires revisiting the site design, amending the permits and more. And because that means a scope change, that also means that we need to revisit some of the due diligence to make sure that when we do come forward for a build recommendation, that it continues to make sense for what our needs are. That would come in the form of a budget request. So the question is-
Managing Director Pankos.
Yes, hi. I'm just wondering what happens if the AUC does not approve our requested amendment?
So if either of those applications to the Alberta Utilities Commission are denied, the deal would fall through.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions at this point? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. So I am also revisiting, we did share much of this in our news release. But the question as to why are we interested in Sama Solar? I just wanted to highlight for the benefit of council and the public. It is subject to further due diligence. We don't plan on recommending a build unless the financial numbers support doing a build. We do at the business level see this as a no regret opportunity, but we need to still confirm that out in our due diligence. We acknowledge that some of the benefits, there's multifaceted benefits. They it first has to cross that test of meeting an internal hurdle rate, however. But if we are able to proceed, we do suggest that it is something that diversifies our electric portfolio in a period where even without clean electricity regulations making it that much harder for us to emit carbon and more costly to emit carbon. Current rules today have us paying more and more every year to emit carbon. So by diversifying, it starts managing that overall per unit of megawatt hour emissions cost to us and to our community. It also helps dilute that risk overall from a future regulatory stringency perspective. Green energy would also create offsets that we can use for our own purposes to comply against current rules with the natural gas assets that we have. And we have been getting questions particularly from large industrials for a green product because they are looking to lean into their own corporate social responsibility obligations and are looking to green energy as a way to help do that. So lots of reasons from a diversification perspective. But with something like solar, we don't want to go big. We don't want to go 325 megawatts immediately. That would overwhelm our system, that would overwhelm our finances and isn't required. The beauty of renewables is that it is highly scalable. So we would look to find a level less than 75 megawatts or up to 75 megawatts that makes sense for our needs today, both from a grid capability perspective, financial capability, and a chance for us to start learning about how that type of generation would impact our grid. I do also want to highlight, people have said, well, why not something later? The challenge about later is if we didn't jump on this opportunity that had been started by a third party, the space to develop renewable energy in this community is pretty limited. We are limited to our franchise area footprint. And unfortunately, renewables take a lot of space in order to move them forward, particularly on solar. But even on wind, even though they don't consume significant acreage, the setback requirements are quite high. So this is an opportunity where there would be the least impact to future development opportunities within the city and an opportunity to look at transitioning into a portion of renewables across our fleet through time at a pace and scale that makes sense for us. And as I said, it starts and finishes with expectations that we wouldn't make a recommendation unless it is expected to return appropriate earnings back into the city to help our financial bottom line. I've had questions about, well, how much is this going to cost us? If we do this right, it's timing. We will pay upfront, we get it all back and then some through time. But that's the additional due diligence that we will need to do. So what does that mean for our budget? Why am I sharing all of this with you? I'm sharing this with you because our budget has been assumed based on status quo. A number of these projects are being completed in parallel and aren't yet ready to be included in the actual budget that is proposed today. So we are suggesting that we will need to come back to council separately on a number of these topics. They are not in this proposed budget. And because we are in wind down mode on the natural gas production side of things, just wanted to highlight that and our team will share later as well. We don't have any new capital asks, not sustaining, not growth, no capital requests on the natural gas side of the business, natural gas production side of the business. On the CCUS side, we do already have an existing budget that we are able to continue doing what we need to do at this time and won't be asking for new funds yet. On the KPMG review, we have the funds needed to complete the current work. We also have some funds remaining on that budget and contract scope if required. But we that will entirely depend on what council decides to do with KPMG's recommendations. So we are not asking for additional funds in this budget at this point either. And on Sama Solar, we aren't yet the owner. So there is work to do there as well. It is likely, though, that we will come to council with a separate budget ask to support additional due diligence before any build decision would come forward. But we didn't want to be presumptuous and assume that we become the owner as part of this budget. So an ask of council to be patient with us. Of course, we recognize ideally it would be helpful to have those big material items recognized as part of our budget. But we're simply not in a position to recommend how to proceed on those areas until we have additional feedback from our regulators and from council through the process as well. So with that, I will certainly stop for some questions and otherwise turn it over to my colleagues for the actual budget review.
Thank you, Managing Director Pankos. Counselor Knodall?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Through the chair to Managing Director Pankos. So I'm curious if you might be willing to provide a parallel, a pair, not a parallel or kind of a on an aside, these are the line items that could possibly be coming forward with a dollar amount so that we at least and the community can kind of have them in their in the atmosphere. So they're not just ambiguous. So is that possible?
Yes, certainly. And we've tried to highlight where there are some moving parts. And I do also know that our Corporate Services Team, our Finance Team is looking at summarizing those moving parts collectively across all the divisions as part of the broader budget approval process. But certainly in the meantime, I anticipate, and part of the reason why we're highlighting is this is a two-year budget. Lots can change in the two-year budget cycle. I do think that we have what our immediate needs are covered. And anything else, we will certainly just need to come back to council. But for instance, don't hold me to numbers, but even just looking at the public, wherever that number came from of 600 million for 325 megawatts on Sama Solar, super rough math, that's $2 a megawatt. And we're asking for up to 75 megawatts. So that's an indicative approach, not the right number, but indicative of the type of scale that we might be asking for with Sama Solar. On KPMG business review, it's entirely dependent on where council goes from there. But like I say, we do have some existing funding to continue with with a smaller implementation approach if council decides to make any changes. And I believe that will be the primary ask from the energy business unit at this point in this budget cycle.
Quick follow up through the chair. I really appreciate the response. Thank you. I think I'm thinking back to when like well site shutdown, like reclamation costs weren't as tangible as they are now. Now we have a budget even that has been or an account that's now dedicated to those particular costs. I think just knowing that that they could become concrete and what it would look like. And you're giving me you're giving me a path to get there. I think and I understand that it's not as easy as saying this is how much it'll cost. But just having it having it available so it is a little bit more tangible makes makes a big difference. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And it doesn't look like we have any questions online, so go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Manager, Managing Director Pankos for providing the context and the background for what has kind of gone into the the budgets for '25, '26 and kind of some of the things to look forward to and consider in the future. I'm Joel Higgins. I'm a business analyst for energy marketing and business analysis. Myself and my colleague Josh are gonna kind of, we're gonna go over these together because there's electric generation and gas production are kind of being presented as the energy production. So my key focus, my key role in energy marketing is electric generation. So I will be discussing the majority of the electric generation budget and the key assumptions that went into it. And I also do support some functions of gas production in the form of actually trading our energy. So I'll let Josh introduce himself and what he does as well and what he'll be going over for the budget.
Yeah, thanks, Joel, and thanks, Managing Director Pankos. So I'm Josh Barkley. I'm the Marketing Specialist for Energy Marketing and Business Analysis. I guess when we were creating the budget, we looked at three main or had our key assumptions and three main economic drivers that we based those assumptions on. One being the commodity price, one being our volumes, be it output or output from from each business unit. And then the other one being the carbon outlook because it's the greatest operational cost for electric generation right now or going forward. So in this, in the two tables there, I just wanted to point out, power prices are on the left, gas prices on the right. The left table is our historic commodity prices. And the right table is our forecasted commodity prices. When we're assuming a forecasted commodity price, we're looking at a point in time over the course of a year. So I guess, just to bring some context, we don't we don't assume that natural gas is going to sell for $2.71 that we assumed in the budget every day for the next 365 days. And same goes for power on an hourly basis. The forecasts are done by a third party, a forecasting company that we utilize. And I guess the big thing to remember is that there is going to be volatility throughout the course of the year. And we'll try and highlight some of the main drivers in that volatility or what could drive that volatility. On the natural gas side, the biggest driver right now or variable is new demand or takeaway from the Alberta market. Obviously, natural gas is a worldwide commodity that we've seen over the course of the last couple of years. It's been really highlighted with the conflict in Ukraine. So the biggest variable right now is the completion of the coastal Gaslink project by TC and the expected completion of LNG Canada in mid-2025. This could take away from the Alberta inter demand or supply, sorry, the inter supply in Alberta, roughly one BCF a day when LNG Canada is comes online. The other variable is the capital investment. The other variable is the capital investment that private producers are willing to spend. Right now, current market sentiment has been that producers would rather return equity to shareholders through dividends and share buybacks as opposed to reinvesting that money into growing their production numbers as we are in an oversupply situation right now, as you can see on the right-hand graph, 2024. The yellow, or the orange line is kind of at the lowest point it's been since 2018, and that signals that there's an oversupply currently. So that's, we are though, or the forecast is showing due to the, the new takeaway capacity that price should pick up with new demand, and then Joel will talk about.
Yeah, so I want to talk a little bit about the pool price. So first, I want to kind of spend some time just giving a high-level overview. I'm gonna try not to go in the weeds, but do you think it is important to give an overview of what, what we're looking at in these graphs and what the pool price is? It's, the price of electricity has been a very hot topic and controversial for the last couple of years. So really, Josh kind of touched on it, is what we're looking at there is the average of price shifts over the course of the year. The wholesale price of power, the pool price, is a bit unique. That price settles every single hour of the day. So to give a bit of an analogy, if you were an energy producer and you were exporting or putting directly onto the grid, receiving a wholesale price, and you had a consistent power output for 8,760 hours out of the year, that is the price that you would realize, that would be your weighted average. So I might use the term realized price throughout, and basically what that means is your weighted Another unique characteristic of the power price is, like other commodities, the price is driven by supply and demand, but on the power side, both of those are very volatile. Volatility in supply from intermittent renewable generation, ramping up and down. So they're only producing, for example, wind is only producing when it's windy, solar's only producing when it's sunny, and that can change very rapidly. So the intersection of supply and demand, where the price is, it's shifting constantly, and it can be quite dramatic, especially with solar ramping up and down. Specifically, unique characteristic of the city and our electric generation is we, we serve our, our city grid first, and then we can export with spare capacity. We also have the ability to import to a certain degree. So the energy marketing team, we, we have an optimization strategy to, when those prices are shifting, to export during high-priced hours and reduce generation and even import during low-priced hours. And that market, the, under the current market structure, the price range can be $0 to $1,000 a megawatt hour, so it can dramatically shift, and it can dramatically shift in, in the course of a day. Yesterday was a good example. I was gonna use an example from 2002, but yesterday was a, was a very good example of how dramatic it can shift. So at the first hour of the day, the pool price settled at, I think somewhere around $32 a megawatt hour. That's a low price. By noon, the price had settled at $1,000 a megawatt hour, and then by midnight, it had gone down under $30. So it can swing very dramatically in one day. And we implement a strategy to, to optimize and, and capture and realize high export price revenue and cost savings to import when it's economical to do that. So our, our realized export price.
Counselor Hirsch.
Sorry to interrupt, Joel. So I'm, on that note, I think, can you maybe explain to council and maybe the citizens where, when we have the opportunity, you speak to the fact that we produce for the citizens first and then any spare capacity goes onto the grid? When there is opportunities for us to make money, just like any other producers that are eyeing that up, they, how does that work? So we'd say, hey, we've got extra capacity. Maybe a wind turbine producer could say, hey, we got capacity. Solar group would say, we got capacity. Who, is there a pecking order now? Is it renewables first and then us, or is there, how does that work when we say we want to raise our hand and contribute to the grid? How does that work?
Through the chair. Yeah, it's a good question, and I do, I, I don't want to get too into the weeds with the, the market structure, but essentially, all power producers submit their, their bids, their offers to produce at the price. It's day before, and it's for each hour. We will produce this level at this price or this level at this price every hour of the day, and the, the system operator will organize that into a merit from lowest cost to highest, and that is the intersection of supply and demand. They will dispatch down and tell our operators to, we, we need this much power, we're at your price or a price above your price, you must begin generating. So we do it in our optimization strategy when we're trading daily, trying to forecast where we see the price is gonna be so we can bid accordingly. And we look at our, our marginal costs and, and what we're willing to, to offer to increase generation and, and pay the input costs on that. So that is a good question. I hope I kind of answered that. I guess one thing is renewables, because they're intermittent and they can't really do that, we will, we will offer this, they typically will bid in at $0 and they will take whatever they can. And it, just the way it has to get dispatched, and then non-renewables, dispatchable, gas-fired, they're controllable, so they'll offer based on costs and scarcity pricing. So for an example, where it's a really low-cost day, there might be a lot of renewables and all of a sudden, they drop off really quick. Now you've ran down that merit order and you've got into some scarcity pricing, opportunistic or peeker plants, recovering their, their costs of investment. So I'll kind of get into some of, a little bit more before I continue on, but did that answer your question?
It, it did, and then just kind of, so, so I'm happy to hear that ASO doesn't say, you know, we're gonna do renewables first and what's your bid? And so it's purely on price bidding, whether or not they accept that, et cetera. I guess that does lead to the next conclusion where the non-renewables, their, their, I guess profitability or cost of input is substantially lower, so therefore they could bid lower. Is the challenge for them, so they could bid lower, but they couldn't bring potentially product if it's not sunny or if it's not windy, and that's the challenge you're seeing? So do they actually lose the bid then if they, or how would that work? You, you mentioned they said bid zero rates.
So, so they're, they're, they're getting the settled, what the settled price in that hour for whatever they're producing. So what the price that they're realizing, they have no control on it because they're, they're up and down, they're, they're more subject to the price that settles and what they produced. So for example, their realized, if I, their export revenue over their total megawatts of generation in those previous years, they might not have realized the pool price because they weren't, you know, it's up and down. So that's kind of really what I'm trying to
Right.
Kind of, kind of lay, lay the foundation of the, how the pool price is presented here and how it's really, it's different for different generators, power producers, and power consumers. And so it is the volatility and what you're realizing in, in a price that's shifting hour by hour.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Since we'll have the, or if at some point we had the solar renewables and our natural gas and the ring fence, what, are there strategic approaches to how and when we would use which, we would bid in which type of electricity, or is that not even possible? I know that, you know, theoretically, a company might want green energy, but you just kind of get the energy that you get out of the wire. So just wondering if, if there's opportunity there.
Thank you. Yes, again, the rest of our fleet is dispatchable. We can go up and down, but the input cost of solar is zero. So it is, it's allowing us to, yeah, I, I think getting into the, the details of how
Fair point.
We don't, we don't have it modeled, but absolutely, yes, it would be, it would be something that we can strategically bid, for sure.
Thank you very much. Any other questions at this point? I don't see any online, so we can move along. Thank you.
Okay, so with that kind of understanding in mind, looking at the historical costs, so we see the huge increase in 2022 and kind of coming down in 2023. So really, what caused that? Was it volatility? Was it everybody bidding? Some, some of the major factors that played into it were, there was retirement of the old coal base load generators, they started retiring, so a lot of dispatchable capacity unavailable in the market. At the same time, there were some unplanned outages of entire large gas-fired plants, so further reduction in dispatchable. And renewables started getting added to a, a lot of new renewable builds, specifically wind, but it just wasn't windy. It was really unusual how, how little wind was being generated. And there is also increase in demand, weather, electrification. So all of those factors coming into play, there were just a lot more consecutive hours of that really high price scarcity, the merit order running out because wind isn't there to back it. And it just ended up being very consistent scarcity of supply and specifically hourly volatility of very, very high-priced hours. So a lot of, a number of things playing into that. And at the same time, you could see the, the price of natural gas went up significantly as well. So those dispatchable gas plants that are operating, their input costs are higher, and the carbon compliance costs had increased that year as well. It, it began its increase. So inputs costs of the remaining gas-fired dispatchable supply had increased, and renewables weren't quite there supporting. So since then, when we're seeing the decrease, obviously, we see the price of fuel come off, so input costs for dispatchable gas-fired generators dropping and significant increase in renewable capacity in general, so even more wind and solar added. And also, some of the coal plants that had retired had, have now converted to natural gas and come online, and there were several large gas-fired plants who began operations as well. So it's all, in general, more supply in the market. However, because there's a lot more renewable, the hourly volatility, as I mentioned yesterday, was a great, great example, that hourly volatility is still there, but not as many consecutive hours of the really high price. And it is important that we highlight that volatility is still there. So even though the price is coming down, the annual average, the settled price of each hour in the year, it, it doesn't mean that we do not have opportunities to export at a high price as well as reduce generation and save costs at a low price. So those hours of opportunity to realize quite significant export price are still there. So as Josh had mentioned, our, our forecast for '25, '26, they're a third party, and they model based on the current capacity, the asset mix in the province, and the future builds that are going to be there, and expected load. So we use those and as our basis for our models and then implement it into our, our dispatched optimization to see how it would play out. So again, these are very volatile prices. They are very subject to change. Things that happened in 2002 that were unforeseeable could always happen in the future, but the, the assumptions that we use are based on existing market conditions and future market conditions modeled by experts in that sense. And then as far as the, on the retail side, so we use those average settled hours as the driver, as they would be the driver for retail rates, but again, and Rochelle had touched on this, our assumptions for '25 and '26 are our current rate structures for the commodity piece for electricity and, and the best of market with the market floor and market ceiling as is right now. So that will play into a little bit of a depressed price as well. And so that is kind of gonna just lay the foundation for our, how volatile the electricity and gas commodity prices are and our, our forecast assumptions moving forward and how they will impact the budget as we'll, we'll go through. So I'll pass it back over to Josh to start getting into our other variable factors.
Thanks, Joel. So I guess our next, our next area is the volumes forecast. For gas operations, we, in the energy marketing and business analysis team, analytics team, are provided with a forecasted volume by Tori's team. They use industry best practices when modeling our, our production volumes and reservoir or reserve life. As you can see, 2025, we're, we're assuming roughly 10,000 MCF or 1,000 cubic feet a day of production. Again, this will fluctuate over the course of the year, daily, but we, typically, this is, we, we use a, an average over the course of the year to do the forecast. There is variability in timing, where production numbers might be a little lower in, in the summer or winter during freeze-offs or during high-temperature periods, and, and that's factored into our assumptions based on the prices in those given periods. On average, we see our decline roughly on existing production of 3% to 4% annually. However, I guess our reserves life, what's left in the ground at the end of the year isn't declining in, at the same rate, and our reserves are showing, or the reserve is, we're gonna be able to produce for a longer period of time based on asset optimization programs that we've done over the past little bit, and then just how we're managing that reserve. How we're managing that reserve, I guess. Um the next.
I apologize for interrupting. Counselor Hirsch.
Just before you get off that point, so years ago, we kind of got, council got an explanation on gas reserves like a. When you blow a balloon. So when you blow a balloon and you let it go, there's a lot of air that goes out at the start in terms of pressure. And then towards the end, it really is not much of anything. So is that kind of the case here? And I I get it, that's only one well. So you kind of, and all of them have different levels of pressure, I get it, so on the average. Um but would we see a gradual increase on the utilization? Um on the, on the declining, if if the wells are actually getting to the point where. They are becoming more and more and more exhausted, where the. Uh I guess the 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 production level would decline a bit more towards the end of a lifespan of a of a well. That's my question.
So through the chair to Councilman Hirsch or Counselor Hirsch, sorry, um. You're right, as a a well um produces over time, it loses pressure and like a balloon. It starts to lose how much gas or air comes out of the balloon. And and depending on. How you manage that balloon, I guess if you squeeze it.
Sure.
The air coming out lasts longer or.
And that's the optimization piece, correct?
Exactly, and and reservoir management piece. Um Tori's probably a bit more of an expert and could speak to it a bit better than I could, could. Uh not being an engineer, having a finance background. Um I'm I'm not sure if you want to come down, Tori, and explain that a little more or.
Thanks, Josh. Um good afternoon, uh mayor, council and executive leadership. The um, the question I think you were asking is, it does it decline faster towards the end of its life? It's actually. Um that three or four percent that Josh referenced, that we're using as a decline rate for the fields and wells in the field. That we're continuing to operate is lower than we've carried earlier in the well's life, in the field's life. So the mature feels that we have. Um have a correct uh have a characteristic that they decline at a slower rate, not a faster rate.
Gotcha.
So we used to probably in the seven to ten percent range early in the field's lives versus three or four now.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tori. Um the other assumption on volumes that we. Use uh for gas production is what is our local demand gonna be as City of Medicine Hat? Um as Managing Director Pancoast has mentioned, is a net buyer of gas. Um so we look at our requirement um on a daily or over the course of the year. The average being, uh we we buy roughly forty-one thousand MCF a day of gas in the market. Through various different counterparties, um or eighty percent of our local demand. Based on that. Um the two big drivers in that is our retail customers or electric generation. Um electric generation, we can forecast pretty, pretty precisely on what our annual. Demand will be to meet our residential load, so based on that, we try and go out and. And procure enough gas to supply the power plant and do a balancing on a daily basis. Um the other. Driver in volumes, I guess, is how much. Forecasted exports genco or generation is gonna have. Um that's where we do that management of volumes for gas buys on a daily basis. Based on how much they're exporting. With that, I guess Joel can speak a bit more about the. Volumes forecast for electric gen.
And and I don't know who's gonna answer it, but um and it is more in the financing now. So you know you've got a base load of of volume that you could chart. Do you, we, do we hedge that amount? Like it's a commodity.
Do we head? Yes, we, oh, sorry, through the chair to Counselor Hirsch. Yes, we do um hedge a portion of our gas volume requirement um on the buy side.
Right.
And what we we are required. Uh we do have a natural hedge in place with gas operation to electric generation.
Exactly.
By by utilizing some of that volume, um but yes, on, we do both physical. Through an index discount and then we do actual financial hedging also.
Okay, thank you.
For electric generation, really, the biggest swing in actual megawatt hours generated. Is gonna be um because of um the volatility and the. Um optimization strategy to export, so um. Uh just looking, I I have a bit of a comparison here for what we budgeted from twenty twenty-four with uh higher prices. A- and and the difference in export megawatts um that could happen when the price uh dips down a bit. So um it's showing in our modeling of uh the opportunity hours. Um in twenty-five and twenty-six, uh down quite a bit from forecasted twenty twenty-four when. Um prices were consistently higher, but again, it isn't still, i- it's not gone, those opportunities are still there, so. Um to give another example, or uh when we are optimizing to export. Our capture or our realized uh price is typically, I we average around two times what the settled price is. Um and uh we optimize so that we are bidding that we would not export. And realize a price that did not cover our input costs or generate uh uh a margin. Um um so twenty-five, twenty-six, we're, we are seeing a decrease from the forecasted twenty twenty-four. Um but the uh the hours that we are um capturing are still significant um portions of revenue. Um with the decreased volumes and exports is, uh of course, there's decreased in costs of supply. With um fuel and carbon. Um and a- another factor in reduced hours is uh the forecasted uh slight increase in natural gas prices. And the uh known increase in in carbon output and that cost of carbon um significantly increasing each year. Um so that is a a large input cost, um and that is a factor in our optimization. Calculations for our bids every day. So uh that's, that covers kind of the exports uh and what we're modeling and forecasting and the assumptions made in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um the the forecast volumes for our retail uh load. Um they are the consistent with um the forecasts from the round one of deliberations. Uh uh when they were discussing the um utility. Um so it is the same volumes there and the same key assumptions of two percent or two-point-six percent. Uh reduction from five-year averages, um so uh. S- decrease from twenty twenty-four budget in uh export volumes and uh small decrease in retail volumes as well. Um so I had touched on on carbon uh compliance and that has come up a a couple times, so. Um this graph might be familiar, I believe it has been part of KPMG. Um materials as well, but it's really just kind of highlighting the cost increase and impact. Uh of the current provincial regulation, um tier regulation, so it's the. Regulation that we are currently subject to and the uh what has gone into our forecast for carbon costs in our modeling. Um so just a a high level, this is another topic you can kind of um go down rabbit holes with, but. At a high level, the tier regulation um each year um decreases the amount. Of allowable carbon emissions you can j- um uh output. Um so they have, there's a benchmark um level that you are allowed to generate. This ma- uh X um tons of carbon um per megawatt of generation, the benchmark. Um anything above that, you need to um offset with credits. Um so fund credits is uh, the price is prescribed and it increases fifteen dollars each year. And then that benchmark of allowable amount decreases each year, so the cost. Um of settling your carbon um is exponentially increasing each year because. At the same level of uh megawatt hours generated, your um the. Uh gap between the benchmark and what you your actual intensity is, is decreasing, so you. You're generating, you're still putting out the same amount, but you have to offset more and more each year. Um and the cost to offset is increasing each year. Um so this graph is a relatively stable megawatt hour volumes, not necessarily representative of our. Our models for twenty-five, twenty-six, but very close. Um and just giving an idea, like the cost per megawatt hour increase without changing anything, so. This is based on our our intensity of our plant. Um it it can. Um change a little bit year to year based on uh how well you're optimizing the actual. Um turbines, um but not that much, so we know what that is and we know what the prescribed rates and benchmarked. Uh um allowable intensities are, so it is fairly easy to forecast what it's gonna cost per per megawatt. But it again, there's volatility from what we're forecasting to what could happen if um eh uh exports. Were are higher because a better price turned out or lower because the price was lower, so. Um the per megawatt hour cost of carbon is going to keep increasing each year. And we've factored in our known, the known cost of that in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um and then um Rochelle had kind of touched on the um, there are other regulations that are. Um kind of looming, the clean energy regulation is another regulation that has been proposed, it hasn't passed, and that's on a federal level. Um and it is um uh extremely punitive, eh essentially. Um you're shutting operations down, so that it's something to consider in the future for um how we decide to. Min- mitigate the emissions requirements of different regulations. Um so the three uh main variables and the three main um causes of increases and decreases. To revenues and expense in these commodity business units were really what we wanted to highlight. Um before we go into what we've modeled to forecast twenty-five and twenty-six. Um so I'll start with electric generation on its own. Uh we'll look at them both on their own and then together. Um uh so as mentioned before, um exports in volume decreasing quite a bit from twenty-four. Uh budget, um and um also the uh price coming down does have an impact. But again, we still are realizing a significant amount on what we can in our models. Um so uh the largest drivers of the decrease in revenue are volumes. And a bit of um price and uh volumes in the retail as well with that two percent, two-point-six percent reduction, so there are. Um both price and volume decreases forecasted. Um but with the decrease in in generating, there's also cost savings. Um so lower uh fuel costs, lower carbon costs offset a bit by the uh price. Uh increases for fuel and carbon forecasted. Um and then uh another large savings uh would be on. Uh the payment in lieu of tax that we pay on export revenues for uh being able to compete in the wholesale market. Um so fewer um uh export revenue dollars is fewer taxable dollars, so decrease in pilot as well. Um on the operating side, um it's fairly flat, the biggest um change in base operating expense. Um specifically a decrease from twenty-four to twenty-five, it's uh mostly related to. Um fluctuations in maintenance schedules. Look, I'll talk about the sustaining capital uh more specifically towards maintenance. Schedules there. Um and then some costs that would have typically been uh maintenance. Um are going to be included in some of the um sustaining capital. Um uh scheduled maintenance in the future as well, so a little bit of a uh decline in operating there. Um with the energy businesses, um it is, it is harder to to um just hold a flat operating. Um and and try and hit those targets, uh which was more of the focus in the round one deliberations. Because there's just scheduled maintenance that has to happen to maintain these assets, to keep them running, um to keep the power on. Um but overall, fairly flat.
Colleen is gonna bring you a glass of water.
Sorry, a lot of talking. Um um so. And then the o- the only key budget assumption for increases um is uh. Is the same for is salaries across for. So um key budget assumption across all budgets for sal- salaries increasing. Um so overall, um although there will be, uh we are forecasting decreased revenue. Um it's because there's decreased volumes and decreased uh cost of sales goes with that as well. Um overall, a showing still uh significant earnings before um interest, um tax and debt. Um and uh significant uh net earn- net earnings as well. And just just to highlight the the other revenue and expense piece there is amortization and interest on long-term debt. Um so I'll pass it back to Josh um to go over gas production.
Yeah, similar to electric generation. Uh gas productions revenues are decreasing, uh but similar again, uh cost of sales are decreasing also. Um when the twenty twenty-four budget was as or created. As we discussed in the price forecast, that was based on a point in time uh when energy security issues were forefront. Um with natural gas prices being at that all-time high on that historic chart. Um or near the all-time high or preview, high of the last ten-year period. Um so that being said, um this budget cycle, we've, we've. Used a price that um. That's forecasted based on all the assumptions that the forecasting companies use, um supply, demand, any, any market variables. Um we're, we're projecting gross par- profits of roughly ten million for each year. Um if you look at our base operating expenses, um you'll see that 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 number doesn't, i- is higher, I guess. But a big driver in in those base operating expenses is our ARO. What are our abandoned and reclamation obligation wells, so that makes up about one-third of that. Um twelve million dollars annually that we're seeing there. Um and a- and another million of the internal um tra- charges that are allocated to gas production. So if you were to remove those, gas, gas production would be a profitable um business unit. Um a- and and we're trying and the um hope is that we will remove those. Over the course of time and achieve reclamation certificates. Uh we'll get into that, I guess, eh later on, though, in the. Capital slides, the other big um glaring increase. Is the other revenues and expenses. Um due to an accounting uh methodology change and. Transfer of reserves from the energy production group. To the uh Medicine Hat Endowment Fund, um. There's less. There's less, oh, thank you. There was interest revenue um that was. Shown in the twenty twenty-four budget in this this line item. Um it's been removed and is captured in the city's overall operating budget. But it just, so now what is in that other revenues and expenses is our amortization, depreciation. And accretion of our of our assets, so your normal decline in in asset value over the course of its life. And that's a true ref- reflection of what those asset costs over their useful life is now.
But we don't.
Sorry?
That number doesn't represent any, like, we're not taking that amortization amount and putting it away somewhere. We're just showing it for our books, is that right?
So we're we're. We're discounting what those assets are worth, but we're not, yeah, like it, there is no reduction. Or no actual expense there other than you're reducing your capital value of the assets.
Thank you.
Sorry. And then I guess, as a whole, energy production is still EBITDA positive. And net income positive uh over the next two years. It is si- it is reduced from what we saw in or have seen in the twenty twenty-four budget. But again, this couldn't change with um actual realized price in year. And I'll hand it back to Joel for.
Um yeah, so um I guess I'll I'll ask if there's any questions about the operating um so far. Before uh we move into um capital. Anybody has any questions so far? I think we've kind of gone through some questions as we're going, so um I'll start.
If you don't mind, uh I know that there's a a we need to have a break at some point. Uh do you, what were you, like, there, I can see there's like ten-ish slides left. Is that, you know, maybe half hour and then we can break then or?
Oh, yeah, I think we could, we could probably get through it within a half hour.
Perfect.
Sure, if everybody's.
But of course, at any time, anyone is free to make a motion to go go for a break or recess. Okay, sorry for the the interruption, go ahead.
Try and speed it up, I'm running out of voice too, so we're we're used to just sitting behind the computer and not talking, so. Uh sustaining capital projects, um so that is, um Rochelle had had uh. Touched on this, um that we are only asking for uh it new budget asks uh it for sustaining capital. And only for electric generation. And um the vast majority of these asks, uh the actual sustaining capital in this request. Is for the scheduled maintenance um on existing fleet. Um these need to happen after a specific uh amount of run hours on the machines. Um hot sections, major overhauls of the actual turbines, and they're quite expensive. Um no new growth, uh again, as uh Rochelle had mentioned. Um n- nothing that has uh been kind of discussed as like could could be. Um or um in the future is included in this uh budget request for new capital. Um so uh specifically here um is what that looks like. So um major differences, um again, like twenty-five, twenty-six, it's it's fairly consistent that just a couple of things. Um in twenty-five that might not be in twenty-six, but it's um. Again, these uh very um heavy capital sustaining capital um projects. To keep our fleet running as is. Um the largest difference in sustaining capital twenty-three, twenty-four is um there was. There has been recently more of long lead times to book the the. These sustaining capital projects in to get them done in the past, it was pretty quick turnover. Um you could book them in the year you were planning on actually having the turbine ripped out and the work done. Um and recently, uh the shops are filling up and it's taking longer. So we kind of ran into that being an issue uh for twenty twenty-four. So you you see in twenty-three, twenty-four included in there are some um some twenty-four budget amendments. For work eh to bring um some of this future maintenance into twenty twenty-four so we could actually book it in. Um so um with that said, those long lead times have been reviewed for all future capital projects. And included in the appropriate years for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um I think once we went back and reviewed some, there was some that kind of moved out uh of a future and in. Just to make sure that we aren't having to come back and ask for a budget amendment because of a timing issue. It's appropriately requested so that um there doesn't need to be any type of. Um hold up with that sort of thing with just the timing of just trying to book it in long lead time. Um all sustaining capital uh being funded through working capital. Uh and the ability to do so with uh uh continued strong um earnings for electric generation. And again, no no future growth capital included or factored into these budget requests. So I'll pass it back to Josh to uh go over uh gas production.
Thank you, uh Councilor Hirsch.
So Joel, just on that note, um so one of the things that I know manager, uh managing director Pankos is struggling with. And so am I, and maybe this council is even on the maintenance capex or the sustaining capitals you call it. Is there contingency built in that? So when I hear hot section, I get scared because we just heard hot section, found work, four million dollars to fix. That four million dollars, I guess that's my point in terms of the found work. Is there contingency built into that? Or are you literally going on the maintenance schedule of this turbine is this ergo? This is going to be the cost of that maintenance. You're not adding any plus or minus discrepancy for any type of found work or anything that pops during that time. Is that correct or? Cause I think that's the challenge that I know managing director struggling with is, how do you build that into a budget? And inevitably, it's going to happen where something's going to break down. We all hope for the best, but we have a lot of moving parts and a lot of them get hot. So I guess that's my question is, can we think or feel? That the ro- that the number is going to be fairly reliable with no surprises? And that means is if there's contingency in there, maybe managing director.
Hi, thank you through the chair, and I do believe uh Director Mostaway is online and could supplement. We do naturally assume some contingency. Uh interesting though, we have been, as council is well aware, we've go- been going through a period of high inflation, which is difficult to predict.
Yeah.
The other thing we're doing is recognizing with the longer lead time, we're now having to forecast that much earlier. And be exposed to that much more risk on inflation. So yes, there's typical contingency, but probably higher risk of getting the number right. But if Director Mostaway is online, I'd uh invite him to supplement.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Hirsch, uh there definitely is some contingency built in there. We don't build it for worst case because that would be putting capital away. That could be spent on something else that may not get used by us, so there is a good chunk of it put in there.
And it's certainly, it's certainly a balancing act, I I appreciate that. It's just good for me to understand if there's kind of some nuances in there that says, okay-ish, because I do understand. And and in fact, there's financial vulnerabilities, but there's also equipment and vulnerabilities when you've got such a long lead time. So the one gen, I know the one turbine or whatever we were talking about is the long lead time. And in fact, you're competing with other turbines that are getting serviced and there's limited repair companies that do it, et cetera. So it's just interesting. Um and do you anticipate with long lead times having to do a capital increase? For um support for parts or even a spare turbine laying around just in case? Because the long lead time, is that ever going to lead into a dis- a the consideration?
Well, right through the chair to Counselor Hirsch, right now we do have a spare turbine. That is the, it's a rotable unit that we swap in and out of each one of those units. We have one that's an LM six thousand and one, that's an LM twenty-five hundred for the two different engines that we have.
Right.
As one's being out, being repaired, that allows us to keep everything running so that we're always in an N minus once or N plus one state, sorry. And that one will come back, it'll get swapped out in a matter of about four to five days into another unit. And then that gets sent out and rebuilt. So we, otherwise, we would be taking one out, sending it out, that unit would sit there empty for ten to twelve months. Or or in the case of an LM twenty-five hundred, it could be up to eighteen months that it sits there empty.
Right, so we could be an N minus or would, yeah, I get it, okay, thank you.
Uh so, yeah, as Joel mentioned, uh and Rochelle had mentioned, or managing director Pankos had mentioned. Uh gas production has no new capital uh requests for sustaining or growth at this time. Um the intention is to utilize capital that has been approved as part of the accelerated abandonment program. And any of the other capital, I believe, that we have in place dating back to twenty-twelve. Um for some of those longer. Longer duration projects that um require certain things to happen prior to them being able to start. Um so on the surface side of the abandonment and reclamation obligation. Um with that, I'll I'll kind of dive into where we're at in the abandonment and reclamation obligation program. Um so currently, the city um still owns and operates. And or has twenty-nine hundred active sites. Of which six hundred and fifty of those sites roughly are producing assets still. Um the other roughly twenty-two hundred sites being uh shut in, suspended or and awaiting abandonment. Um we have roughly a hundred wells or downhole abandements still to complete. Um and then that number rolls into the twenty-two hundred active sites roughly. Um that need surface and environmental cleanup. I um what we've achieved to date, um or as of twenty twenty-three. We've achieved three hundred and sixty um reclamation certificates from both Saskatchewan and um Alberta. Energy. Regulators, um and we've also disposed of roughly three thousand wells or facilities, pipelines. Um which would have added to our overall uh abandonment and reclamation cost obligation. Through divestitures to various other producers or in the area. Um with the hopes that uh w- we continue to uh do our part. And clean up our our uh sites and return them back to their natural state. And achieve those reclamation certificates. I think the the objective of gas operations group or production group. Is to reduce that liability, as I mentioned in the operating income statement. That that this portion of the operating expense is roughly one-third of the operating budget. So it is a large portion and the quicker we can achieve those reclamation certificates. Or are able to reduce that liability through divestitures. Um it 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 helps the business unit uh return to profitability and and show that it is a a profitable unit. A business unit based on the act of producing wells. Um I guess, over the next ten years. Based on the information we have today and and what we're forecasting to achieve. We're trying to drop that twenty-two hundred um. Surface cleanup, surface and environmental cleanup by ninety percent over that time. And and which in theory will reduce our our obligation or our operating costs of those wells. So um that that's, I guess, where we're at today and hopefully where we're going in the future with with our gas operations group.
Counselor Hirsch.
I apologize, but Josh, the I I'm I'm intrigued by this as well. Um are you finding that the 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 pricing that on bids that come in for abandonment? Become less and less as the now the abandonment sector? Cause now there's businesses that specialize in that. I actually just financed the group that actually in one unit could do the four or five different applications. That would have been subleased or 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 actually contracted to individual companies, thereby saving money. Thereby making the bid cheaper s- and I and I guess, so is, are you finding our abandonment costs? Going to be less because of efficiencies and competition out there, et cetera? So is that, I guess, do you feel like that's going to save us a little bit of money in the long run as well?
Through the chair to Counselor Hirsch, I I I'm gonna refer to Tori on this. Because he he's the one who reviews the bids from those service providers. So um he'll be able to address that a little more, uh I just look at the overall.
Thank you, um through the chair to Counselor Hirsch, uh I think it's, yes, we have observed over the last. Um initial years of our abandonment operations that um some efficiencies in the industry did result in some. Uh lesser costs uh on a per well or a per pipeline or per asset basis. Um and we 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 adjusted our tendering strategies to trying to co- you know, better accommodate the services and how they were changing, how they're they're being provided. Um but I don't know that we we've seen a decrease in costs recently as a result of that, because it's it did get competitive. And and some of the um uh increased activity over the last few years in the industry created a lot of services as well. Uh or a lot of interest in creating those services, so um competition um is out there, lots of services and they they. I wouldn't say the costs are reducing today, but there certainly was observation of efficiencies from the early days of of some of the. Some of the abandonment technologies we employed, you know, five or ten years ago, they did get more efficient for sure.
And all, and obviously, in your in your projections for the budget, you would probably incorporate what you're kind of looking at now for market. In terms of what that would look like, and is that built in even, because you talked about the next ten years. So you believe kind of the abandonment costs would be roughly stagnant, uh never mind for indexing for inflation. And over the next ten years, do you feel like that's the case, like the, that's fairly constant, the abandonment costs?
Um through the chair, the um. We have seen cost increases, so we've seen, we've seen um durations for things get longer. Uh services in the area are are, you know, lessening as there's assets, you know, less operating assets in the areas.
Sure.
Um but the the information we have learned in doing thousands of things on our wells and our pipelines and our and our environmental work. Is being used to predict the future costs, yes.
Gotcha.
Um and so, but we are finding how we, we certainly are being cognizant of doing things in large pieces. Cause we've learned that is far more cost efficient as an order and and the services are far more efficient as a result. So we've we've changed how we've done things from years ago.
And that might be a multitude of wells to do rather than versus like when you award a bid, it might be two hundred wells. You would like to get them to be abandoned versus so from a scalability point of view, the more they do, the better the price is going to be, et cetera?
Correct, yes, um two hundred would be a large package, we've done some of that large, yes. But uh certainly don't do any five or ten pack- well packages like we used to do years ago.
Right.
For those reasons.
Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you.
We're good there with that, yep, okay. Um so overall, as Joel mentioned, um our our capital budget is largely. Or is or requests at this time are due due to regular maintenance and sustaining capital required. By the electric generation group, um we will use the existing uh um gas operations. Approved capital from previous years to to continue to work on um that abandonment.
to, to continue to work on um that abandonment and reclamation obligation that we do have. Um, I'm not sure if there's any other questions or at this time about that? Or if, sorry.
I'm not seeing any. Um, would you like to go on to the risks?
Yeah, we can, sorry, yeah, go on to the risks, sorry. Um, sorry, uh, risks and risk mitigation efforts that we try to do, I guess, um, when we're, we're creating the budgets and things we, we look at. Commodity price risk, uh, we obviously touched on this with uh councillor Hirsch asking if we use um hedging strategy. We do use a hedging strategy based on uh the city's approved hedging guidelines as part of the risk committee. Um, market rules, we, we, we participate in various different industry working groups. Trav- or managing or director, Tukshur is currently at the um restructured energy market consultation periods in Calgary. Uh, we sit on um gas transportation um regulatory board with um TC Energy. Um, policy and regulations. Uh, we, we are actively engaged with um counterparties uh to mitigate the risk of our co- carbon uh obligations a- and any, any efforts that we can make to reduce those our, our operational costs for both uh gas production and electric generation as both are part of the tier program. Um, external transmission constraints. Um, this is something that has been um a more recent problem with the buildout of renewable generation in the southeast corner of Alberta. Uh, there is only so much room on those wires that can take megawatts to where the demand is. So w- we are seeing periods um where those lines are you, being utilized fully, I guess. Um, the, the caveat with that is when there's oversupply of power when those renewables are going is it's usually in a low price in period. So we are able to utilize and alleviate some of the pressure on those lines by importing power because it's usually below our operational costs during those periods. Operational risks that we have um looked at and see as a potential risk is um getting gas supply to City of Medicine Hat. Uh, as mentioned, we are a net buyer of gas. Um, and we are in an area that, of the province that doesn't get a lot of capital investment by tran- or TC Energy anymore um due to the high um growth in northwest Alberta, northeast British Columbia. So when they're looking at deploying a limited capital budget that they have, they look at that area first as it impacts more customers than it does down in the southeast corner here. So getting new gas supply has been a challenge. We recently um did sign up for more gas transport um in, on, on the Nova system. So uh we have sufficient supply at this time to meet our local demand. However, um, if we ever saw a large uh commercial customer that needed gas supply from us, it could become an issue. Uh, market volatility, again, we look to optimize importing, exporting um opportunities. We look to de-risk through um hedging strategies uh and through the use of different um financial and physical instruments. Um, hiring, hiring challenges, obviously, um, finding, finding skilled workers is always a challenge. Um, there isn't so much flood and drought risk anymore i- in this area um in terms of the energy production. But uh anytime there's lower uh levels of water in the river, this impacts electric generation as it requires a, a constant supply of water to um keep the units cool. So, and then the supply chain risk, yeah, uh, as Joel mentioned, booking those uh assets in for hot sections or gener- generator rebuilds, that is turning into a longer lead time and more challenging to get time in the shop for those assets. A- and you have to be pretty precise on, on what your forecasted um run hours those are to m- maximize the value per megawatt on those assets. I think um that's kind of where we were at for.
Very good.
And I think if council's willing to bear with me, there's just a couple of slides that I can quickly run through. And thank you to Josh, Joel, Tori and Boyd thus far. Uh, so uh focused on the budget, this is just a quick recap of long term. Long term, really, we are very mindful of the variability and where we're headed with energy transition on the regulatory side of things. Obviously, you heard from the team that we are already facing annually increasing costs with respect to carbon for our electric generation fleets in particular. And the question is whether or not that's going to increase in stringency on an accelerated basis or not, whether we can continue to use carbon credits or whether it will be more prescriptive on what we are able to do with our assets. So we're quite mindful on the broader scenarios there. Uh, and certainly recognizing that could be a generational burden for our electric generation fleet. So that's why we are being quite thoughtful about it and um with a focus on our customers. We want to make sure that our community, our taxpayers, our ratepayers are well served by the assets we have and the decisions we're making going forward. In the meantime, it is about optionality and trying to position amongst that uncertainty. And certainly on the natural gas side of focusing on making sure that we are continuing the wind down that has started, optimizing in the process to make sure that we are getting the best value out of those assets as well. And more specifically, in terms of some of the things that we are focusing on longer term, we are continuing to work the process for Sama Solar to see if we can bring that to council for additional decision making. We have been progressing our energy innovation challenge with some uh recent vendor awards through a first round recently announced and subsequent um sessions looking forward to, to see if we can look at some early emerging innovations. And in, in this last case, the most, the two that were awarded were more so on the data optimization and data analytics side of things to make sure that we can make the most of the existing grid assets that we have and keep costs low for our ratepayers. Um, also opportunities on the energy side in future challenge submissions. Have mentioned that we are fully engaged on the restructured energy market redesign consultations with the Alberta Electric System Operator and uh continuing again to actively manage our natural gas production fleet to make sure that we are minimizing the abandonment and reclamation cost and getting the most out of the remaining production. And working very closely with our finance team on a corporate-based financial scenario planning and analysis to make sure that we have sufficient financial capacity to manage through a number of these uncertainties that we face going forward. So next steps, uh, not for recommendation today, but this is some of the background and context for when you will be asked to make a decision regarding our budget approval. And when we do make that recommendation, that is the approval that we will be seeking from council. And that is all we have for you today.
Thank you, and through the chair, um, I'm just gonna tell you about my process. When I receive things, I sort of put the, using Adobe, put sticky notes on them with a question mark or a highlight. The highlight tells me I really need to pay attention to make sure I understood what I read. And the question mark is if I have a question. So if I haven't asked questions, it's because as you were speaking, my little question mark sticky was on the page and you answered it, so I just wrote the answer down. But I do have a couple of the highlights that I want to clarify. I don't think any of them are questions and I don't think it will take long. And I think managing dire- director Pankos knows the answer to all of these inquiries just to confirm my understanding. So let me find the first one here. I highlighted a lot of things clearly, uh, right. Um, at the commodity price s- um slide, there was just a reference right on the top of it to the coastal gas link project and exports to Asia and that happening. I take it from that 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 would not be good for our gas costs and will drive the cost of energy production up for the City of Medicine Hat.
I'll defer this one to Josh. It really is about the supply-demand economics and how it impacts our basin.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, councillor Robbins, we're, you're on slide twenty eight?
I'm on slide twenty eight, right at the top bullet point. I just want to know what the impact will be on the City of Medicine Hat. It's sort of implied there, but I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yes, through the chair to councillor Robbins. Um, this will have a negative impact on um rate or retail customers potentially. Uh, if, if prices go up, we are buying that gas in the market similar to anybody else. Um, and if there is new um demand or uh opportunities to move gas um to a new market um that wasn't previously there, that will take supply away from um the inter-demand, which is Alberta as a basis, basin, sorry.
Um. So be undersupplied in Alberta as opposed to oversupplied?
No, no, obviously, sorry if I implied that.
Yeah, okay.
Supply right now outpaces demand. Um, there's considerable supply that can come online very quickly also. Uh, as I mentioned, northeast um British Columbia and, and um northwest Alberta, they have an inventory of drilled wells that can be completed and tied into a system based on supply, demand or or market drivers, similar to how we would manage our, our, our generation. They aren't having to go out and drill a bunch of new wells to bring new supply on. They've already drilled the wells, they're sitting there in an inventory waiting to be brought online. So there could be a potential for increase in price. And I, and when the forecast, what the forecast looks at is, is that scenario is where or are comp- is there going to be a willingness to bring new supply on? Or at what point is there that, that willingness? And that's where they do that pri- where the price comes out of it. So uh, it, it is increasing based on that supply-demand uh assumption that they're making a- and it could have an impact on our customers, yes.
Okay, just one more question, just one more question because the rest were answered. Um, and it's a very simple one. So I'm on slide thirty one, if that helps, the um compliance cost slide. And I just wanted to confirm that this compliance cost, the numbers down the side, is that just tier provincial? It doesn't include anything that the federal government may do? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, that's all, my only two questions, thank you.
All right, I don't see um any other questions. I'm just gonna take a quick peek online to see if we have any. No, we do not. So um, the, the next step is it will come to council for debate and approval?
Yes, thank you, Matt Clark, as part of the regular budget process, this um what is shown here is the context for when that does come forward for council consideration.
Okay, so uh, does anyone have any objections to adjourning? This meeting is adjourned.